I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for this beautiful day and the many blessings you bestow upon us. Lord, please take care of our military men and women and their families while they are away defending this great nation and protect them from harm's way and return them safely to their loved ones. And lord, we ask a special prayer for the soldiers deployed from North Carolina to Ukraine. Please be with them. Lord, please bless our county employees to help make Green County a better place to live and work. And dear God, we look to you to guide us in the business presented to the commissioners this morning and provide us with the knowledge and wisdom to make the best decisions for all the citizens in Green County. Lord, in your name we humbly pray, amen. Please join me in salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Fellow commissioners, you have the proposed agenda for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as written, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as it has been presented. Any further discussion? Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion is carried unanimously. We have our consent agenda for today's meeting. Today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we do have corrected minutes.
We do have corrected minutes, there were two minor grammatical errors. And those changed minutes have been provided at our stations.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, with the changes being corrected.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried. Do we have anyone for public comments this morning? Mr. Jason Tyndall.
Please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to come speak with you this morning. There's a big surprise to me on the Thursday night to notice at eight o'clock in the evening that our Sheriff Smith is retiring. So first of all, I'd like to congratulate him on all his years of service to the Green County. I'm sure, just like you, we all appreciate him. But unfortunately, that leaves a void here in our sheriff's office. As most of you know, I ran against Lemmy Smith in the 2018 sheriff's election. I ran and received 2,340 some votes from the Green County citizens that wanted me to be sheriff of Green County. So I sent emails to all of you on Thursday night, not sure who got them. I did hear back from a couple. So I wanted to come publicly and announce to you that I would like to be considered for that sheriff's position since it's been announced. But I'm not one to come and tell you that, hey, I participated in the last election and got 2,300 citizens to vote for me. That's why I should be sheriff. No, I feel like this is a three-minute job interview. And that's why you have that paperwork on your desk. The first piece of paper that you have, it's absent of a cover layer because I'm here to explain it to you. The first piece of paper is the disclosure statement from the North Carolina Sheriff Standards Association, Training and Standards Commission, that they have done my background check and said that I am a great candidate for sheriff and I can proceed. That's what a disclosure statement looks like. The Board of Elections will get that when I file for sheriff this year on the Democratic ticket. The second page is my resume. This is 19 years of law enforcement experience. At the top, you'll see what my goals are here in the Green County. I want to serve Green County with honor and integrity. I also want to get Green County charities involved in the community and bring community events to Green County. Is that, is that me doing that? Okay, all right. So, so you look under that, you see my work history, you see I started my full-time law enforcement career here in Green County. I spent three years here. I've lived my most of my adult life here, the short of three years, moving away to Goldsboro for a short period of time and then moving to Farborough for a short period of time. I live in Wallsterburg now with my wife and son, and I work at the Biden Hospital. So that's my resume. The next, what you'll see is a, I believe it's a life-saving commendation awarded to me by the Biden Medical Center that I was issued last year. And then under that would be about 37 pages of certificates. That's the only certificates that I get my hands on this weekend. You know, I had to work all weekend, so those are certificates I got to have at my house. So that's just the training that I have, the certificates at my home. I'm a well-certified police officer. If you need more, I could probably get my transcripts from different colleges and get you plenty more than that. I already talked to myself about this interim sheriff position. I'll see a lot of changes happening here in Green County. I think the main goal is to finish up Sheriff Smith's term and prepare that for the next sheriff, if it's me or the next sheriff that's elected to the county. Thank you for, I've run out of time, so I don't want to rush through anymore. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Charles Carter. I stand before you this morning not as a candidate, nor as a supporter of any candidate this time. I stand before the board as a concerned citizen. Over the past four to six weeks, events have happened that bring us here this morning. With the retiring of Sheriff Smith, many have and will file for that office. That brings me to my reason for being here. The board that sits before us is now tasked, per North Carolina General Statute 162, to name an interim to take the seat. I'm quite, I'm quite sure, well, at least I hope, that the board has read the, has read the general statute. General Statute 162-5 states that upon a vacancy, key word vacancy, the coroner executes all process until the first meeting of the county commissioner succeeding that vacancy. Since Green County has no coroner that I'm aware of, that would fall on the chief deputy until the county commissioners appoint some person to fill the seat. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, again, there is no vacancy. There is no vacancy. The definition for vacancy is an unoccupied position, unoccupied job, an empty space. If I'm not mistaken, Sheriff Smith, congratulations on your retirement, still sits in that seat. You appoint anyone today, you appoint anyone today, and you have violated that law. There is an anticipated vacancy. Each candidate for sheriff, by new law effective 10/21, all candidates must have a disclosure statement. It is my hope that if the board decides to violate General Statute 162 and name a replacement today, they would at least require all potential candidates to have that disclosure, so they would not be guilty of two major violations. Lastly, this meeting has been called mighty quickly. Less than 96 hours ago, it was finally announced Sheriff Smith would retire. And we are here today to appoint a sheriff. With that quick turnaround, it begins to smell to many and raise some questions as to the board's motives. To me, it appears as though the board itself tried to save face when questioned about the appointment of an interim. Reminds me a lot of a story in God's Word where a man stood named Pilate. He didn't want to cause such a ruckus in his state, didn't want to cause such upheaval in his county, that as he stood before the multitude, he washed his hands of the matter. I'm asking you, county commissioners, are you going to be Green County's pilot? Or are you going to let each candidate that's here become vetted and make a proper and informed decision? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Hearing no further public comments, I declare the public comment section closed. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Jessica Anderson to come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody this morning?
Doing well.
Good. So I am here to introduce new personnel at the extension staff. As you may know, Ms. Eve Honeycutt left us in November to further her career in agriculture. And so we have hired a replacement livestock agent that serves Green and Lenore Counties, just like Ms. Eve's position did. Her name is Ms. Kalen Moorfield, and she started on January 3rd. And I'm going to let her introduce herself.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Kalen Moorfield. I'm actually from Pink Hill, Lenore County, grew up there my whole life. I've been involved with livestock all my life as well. I grew up showing goats and pigs in the livestock shows, did a 4X Skillathon and livestock judging with Ms. Eve. I've actually known her since I was roughly around the age of five, so she has trained me for many, many years. I've been in extension, like, learning the stuff throughout my life, but now I'm starting to learn the details and get involved with my community. So if there's anything I can do, please let me know, because it's the community that raised me. So just let me know what I can do to help you, if there's anything you see I need to step in with the livestock or any agriculture. I'm here, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
And Ms. Eve, being the person that she is, she has, you know, stayed around and helped Kalen, you know, hit the ground running as she started in January.
Fantastic. Welcome to Green County.
Welcome to Green County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Wiggins. Hold on.
All right. I have two items this morning. The first is the collection report and order to advertise. Before you is the collection report for January, which includes all unpaid property taxes, both real and personal. The amount of unpaid taxes for the current year that constitutes liens on real property must be reported to the board. That amount is $559,680.73. And the board must order the collector to advertise these tax liens.
Do we have a motion for that order?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay, the motion is carried unanimously.
The second item is to schedule the dates for the board of equalization and review. General statutes state that the board must convene not earlier than the first Monday in April and not later than the first Monday in May. Adjournments should be on or before the third Monday following its first meeting. These meetings must be advertised at least three weeks prior to convening. Therefore, I respectfully request that the board of equalization and review be scheduled to convene on April 4th, 2022, and adjourn on April 18th, 2022. And a motion is needed for this.
Any motion to that effect?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? Okay. Have a motion and a second, need a further discussion? Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. County Manager, just as a matter of, it does say no board action is needed at the bottom, and that's a mistake. So we took care of the matter. Thank you.
Okay. My first item for action today is I would ask that you take off the table the proposed EMS schedule fee amendment. There were some questions at the prior meeting about what some of the company codes meant. So a little bit of research, I asked Rock and Jeremy. And GCEMS is Green County EMS. GCFRU is Green County Fort Run Unit. GCHOO is Green County Hookerton. And GCMAU is Green County Maury. So you'll see that they all repeat because they all follow the same codes under the umbrella of our system.
Right.
Sorry for the confusion in the last meeting, I hope that clears it up.
One question I had, your front letter said we are, been recommended by a billing company?
Yes.
And then on your sheet, it says recommended fee by the billing company? And then proposed fee?
Yes.
So which one are we looking at? The recommendation or the proposed?
The proposed fee would be the fee charged, and then a percentile is reduced and by Medicare, by an insurance company for what they'll pay. Because what we are after is we are after the maximized payment from our insurance and Medicare without leaving monies on our table.
So we're not following the recommended fee by Colleton?
We want to return, let's just use the first line, we want to return for a run 1053. So we're going to charge 1435, knowing that there's going to be a reduction from the amount that we are proposing we charge. We don't get 100% of what we ask.
Well, some items are due, some we don't. You know.
So we're trying to make sure that we don't leave money on the table.
So we're trying, you're saying you're looking at the last column?
Yes, ma'am.
So why is the date still white?
Now, that I can answer you.
When does this become a fact? Because when it goes to Medicaid, it goes back to July 1. I'm sure we've got our bills paid before now.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
All the Medicaid says July 1, 2021, to fix 30, 2022.
I'm sorry?
Medicaid sets those, we can't change them. We have to go on their fee schedule and change it July 1.
Oh, so this was established back July 1?
Yes, ma'am. They'll update them again this July 1 for Medicaid on it.
See, that's the recommended by Colleton, that's the set by Medicaid.
Okay. So how about the other from date through date?
Now, that I can't answer you, that's just-
1900 to 2999.
That's the schedule that was delivered to me by EMS and emergency management.
Wasn't that one of our questions last time?
I can interrupt their meeting if you'd like, I know they're having a-
Well, I mean, I would like to know the dates, they're not correct on here.
They'll update them when you approve them.
So they will be approved today? If they're approved today, they go into effect today?
That's right.
Right, it'll be for services rendered after today.
Okay. And they will stay in effect until?
You change them.
You change them again?
Yes, ma'am.
And I will say that Colleton has said that they do recommend that these be updated frequently, as in annually, because costs are continually changing in our, you know, inflated world right now.
Do I have a motion to accept this fee schedule?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Now, it's on the, it's on the floor, is there other discussion since this motion on the floor?
Well, I would like to beg the date to be changed.
And it will be when we approve it, is that correct?
Yeah.
On the chart?
Yeah, when it's updated.
And it will be through July, I mean, June 30th, 2022?
If you don't update it again, or Medicaid doesn't set another rate, it would be 2023.
She just says they set them at July 1 every year.
That's right. So if they don't update it again, the year will just go up one. If they do reset, we'll come back and ask you to approve another proposed schedule amendment.
I agree, it sounds messy, but that's the way it apparently works, so. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second, is there further discussion? Here are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next item for action is a conflict of interest policy proposal. Our personnel policy references conflicts of interest, but we don't have a standalone policy. There are some funds that we are running into, the SCIF funds, state funds, and the ARP funds, federal funds, are asking that we submit a conflict of interest policy. So some other jurisdictions are like us and don't have standalone policies. So the state created one and distributed it amongst the people that didn't have one, and it's a fill-in-the-blank. So we filled in Green County for a standalone conflict of interest policy to satisfy the request for these to fund funding sources. Are there questions? I also would like to point out Gay did look through it and approved it, she was okay with it.
And do we have any conflict of interest at this point?
None that I'm aware of, but we're in line with this policy.
So on the policy number 1B, a director is related to a staff member, is that within their department or within any department?
Within any department. It says just a director is related to a staff.
But we have that.
And that would need to be disclosed. This board would need to be aware of that and be able to fill up a Chinese wall or type of college. It's not that the policy absolutely has it set, but once a year, everyone will have to disclose.
And you set a term I don't know about, what is a Chinese wall?
I'm sorry, lawyers like-
I mean, I know where China is and I know what a wall is, but put them together here is-
I think it's a-
I thought I was taken down, didn't you?
I think it's a, I think it's a reference that we lawyers like to make to the Great Wall of China. But it's a shield basically, where if you were to have a person working in the water department that's related to someone in tax, that they are not working together on something between the two departments, especially if money is involved and not being consulted, they, they would need basically to be separated. We'd need to be aware of the conflict so that we could keep it from interfering with the actions of the county.
So are you, as this, this policy is passed, are you going to go through our employees and determine if we have conflicts of interest to present a full disclosure in writing?
What will have to happen is we will have to let a date or a time, and all of the employees will have to read the policy and then disclose and, or sign it and state there is no conflict. The idea being then that if there is not, that someone would lose their job, but that we can separate out and make sure that there's not an appearance of something inappropriate happening. There's nothing inappropriate happening right now that we need to take action about, but we would like to be able to say we were aware, we took action to make sure that this could not be seen as inappropriate even. We either limited computer access to information for a certain employee if it, if there was a conflict of interest.
And this also includes county commissioners?
It does. I would dare say though, that of course, the county commissioner should not be precluded from access to anything. It might be that the employee then would be the one, if by relationship to the county commissioner needed to be. Well, I think this needs to be a very close relationship, such as immediate family, is how we've defined it here. A spouse, a child, a parent, a sibling.
And do we need to sign one of these disclosures?
Each of the commissioners will also need to make a disclosure.
And most organizations now have these disclosures anyway, if you're on a board, you have, you know, most of them have now that you need to sign. And the thing is mostly to help keep things clean, you know, within the organization?
Yes.
It would appear to me that the proper time for this would be the fiscal term. And I also believe that we'll be bringing on an HR person, this will fall in the realm of what they would be responsible for and to, to provide you at that time. Like I said, this is just being brought to your attention. This is being brought to your attention now because we would like to be able to get the funds that we have been awarded and stay in compliance with the granting agencies.
Move to go ahead and adopt this proposed conflict of interest policy, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I don't mind disclosing my personal conflicts. I'm relating to two people in the audience, and that Beverly and Rachel. And I have no problem disclosing that. Now, I do have a problem with item number three. It says, "The commission of board member officers or staff members shall not participate in any discussion or debate of the board of commissioners or of any committee therefore infrists a subject discussion as a conflict, transgression, or situation in which there may be a conflict of interest." I disagree with that. I think that should be allowed to participate in discussion. However, I do agree that they should not make the decision, should not be allowed to vote. So I'm sorry to know on this.
Okay. Well, I will call the question then. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Carries four to one.
Thank you. Next item for action today is a capital project budget ordinance amendment. The request is to continue renovating at the complex. The initial renovation, which was approved, I think it was approved in December of 2021, 2020, excuse me.
2020.
Thank you. It took a little longer than we wanted, but we did do the administrative offices at the complex. It looks very nice. So we were able to renovate a 45-year-old space, make it more modern, efficient. We also created some new space. And very importantly, we secured the offices. And this amendment is to not only do the offices, but the entire facility. The additional funds requested, which is $100,000, would be to renovate the space for the HR person, which was previously used by the veterans who are moving here. The hall bathrooms, which are in dire need of updating and refreshing, and just a little bit of paint and ceiling in the kitchen. It would also do two double doors on each side of the building and also the single doors at the north side of the building before you go down the steps to the health services building. This is also going to include the wiring, the hard structured cabling, and the technologies that we have in the other parts of the facility in the locations I'm mentioning. Are there questions?
Yeah, bathrooms, I thought we were using COVID funds to do the bathrooms touchless.
They are touchless.
They did.
That is done.
That's true.
This is going to be to new stalls, partitions, paint, ceiling grids and painting, painting the ceiling grids and putting in ceiling tiles. But the furniture will remain.
You said $100,000, does this not say $200,000?
No, it says $100,000. So we can go through the budget amendment. What this means is, in Fund 11, which is our general fund, that is where the funds will be appropriated from. The project is Fund 12, okay? So that's the offsetting dual entry that's being made for the revenues, the expenditures. Once the general fund appropriates it, it transfers it to the complex, it is then received by the fund of the project, and then the expense is the renovation. It's just a dual-entry accounting. It's $100,000.
So if I'm a citizen and I'm a county commissioner, when you look at the bottom, it says $200,000.
Right.
If I'm bound to appropriate to county dollars. So I know it's an accounting issue, I'm assuming with Ms. Beverly, but that should have been an explanation in the little box.
I'm happy to explain it to you now, or at any time you'd like to call or email. But that's all that it is, is it's fund, fund accounting, and it's just a dual-entry accounting system. Beverly, am I, did I miss anything? It's $100,000.
It does look like it's $200,000. If you look at the total, it clearly says $200,000. I understand what you said, and I'm not an accountant, and I don't do many double entries that I'm aware of.
I don't believe you practice fund accounting.
But I haven't, I haven't, so.
Well, I just said it looks like fund dollars $100,000, county dollars $100,000, that's why I was asking.
I agree with you.
$200,000.
Yeah, it does look, anyhow. Do I have a motion to approve this budget amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And a second? Susan, you don't want to second that. I'm picking on you, I'm picking on you.
I don't do double count these.
I don't either.
I just add and subtract.
Any further discussion on this particular matter?
What's the time limit on this?
So I've got a few projects lined up with Joe, so we'll put it in the queue. There's a-
Were you thinking about July 1, you want me to think about this fiscal year?
Yes, we'll be finished, at least with the veterans part for July 1.
Okay.
Veteran's part.
You think you're going to have doors, new doors by July 1?
We will see. That's the supply chain issue.
I know it is, and that's why I bring that question.
The veterans part will be renovated for the HR person.
Okay, okay.
One question, it's my little thing, but the bathrooms. We've got a trash can right by the sink. I'd love to see that fixed close to the door, so the individual washes his hands with a paper towel. He can open the door with it and throw it in the trash can and walk out. It's good sanitary, this COVID mess that we got going on, I think would be a good idea. You see it at big stores, you know, their bathrooms the same way. So something to think about, if it can be done.
We need to pay attention to that and, uh.
If it fits in the footprint, of course.
Yeah, of course. And, uh, it's a superfluous thing. But if you've got the touchless towel, paper towel dispensers, you wash your hands. If it isn't right there, you're going to run water on the floor with your hands dripping before it actually dries. Then you have a wet floor if you don't have a, a, a trash can or something there to prevent it from being wet. So we'll just have a look at all those things. It's a growing process. It's an evolution. We'll take care of it appropriately. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item is the appointment of interim sheriff. Um, we've heard some public comment on that. Um, I would ask for direction on how you'd like to proceed.
Gay, can you explain this law that Mr. Carter just talked about a few minutes ago?
Yeah, um, there's, there's actually, I guess, three sections we need to be looking at. The first is the one that Mr. Carter referenced, one sixty-two dash five, um, also one sixty-two dash two and one sixty-two dash.
One sixty-two dash eight. Um, one sixty-two dash five, it basically places it on the county commissioners to fill a vacancy when a sheriff retires. Um, the appointment should happen. It will, the first meeting, March first or later, once there is the retirement. There is absolutely no guidance as to exactly how the board should do that as far as, far as taking candidates. The board is just simply to appoint someone who is qualified, meets the qualifications to run for sheriff and be elected sheriff, which NCGS one sixty-two dash two covers that. And it does not have a lot of specifications, someone twenty-one years of age, someone who is a qualified voter in the county. Um, and someone who has not been convicted of a felony, even if their citizenship rights have been restored or there's been an expungement, which goes to the disqualif-, the, um, disclosure statement that needs to be obtained from the Sheriff Standards Commission. Right now that I am aware of, the board may have been approached and be aware of more people than I am aware of. I am aware of three people that, um, have asked the board to consider them for this appointment. Um, we have disclosure statements from the Sheriff Standard Committee for two of them. Actually, all three. It's just one of the disclosure statements actually expires. Um, I've been in touch with, um, Diane at the Sheriff Standards Commission. Unfortunately, she was out on Friday. Um, she called me back this morning and then had to immediately go into a meeting. I do not know. I wanted to have a timeframe for the commissioners today as to how long it takes her to get those issued. Um, there will be other requirements such as a bond. Um, the sheriff must be bonded. The statutes require that the sheriff, um, have that bond by the, um, present it to the commissioners by the Monday following the election in November. The statute is silent as to when an interim sheriff would have to present the bond, but the interim sheriff would have to be bonded as well. Um, I do not think that the commissioners need to require the bond. That would seem sort of excessive to require that, um, before determining who they might wish to appoint as interim sheriff and let that person seek out the bond, especially since the statutes allow the elected sheriff to get the election results prior to having to actually obtain the bond. Are there any questions? I think I covered everything, but there's a, a lot to cover. Um, if I didn't state it clearly, it is, the statutes are silent as to the procedure. So that is really up to the county commissioners. You can either enact a procedure if you so desire or you do not have to. Um, I think we can look sort of to the appointments we've had in this judicial district recently of two clerks of court, one here in Green County and one in Wayne County, done by our Superior Court Judges, Judge Bland and Judge Pate. And I, I believe they followed their statutes and appointed who they felt. I don't, I'm not aware of any nomination process or submissions that they required from those candidates. Um, again, it was their discretion, their statutes are silent, just as yours is. Other than the disclosure statement, anything else is up to the board.
And Ms. Stanley, as you said, and I guess Mr. Carter said, one sixty-two dash five A, if any vacancy occurs in the office of the sheriff, at this point, we do not have a vacancy and will not have a vacancy until after March twenty-eighth.
That is correct. The, the board cannot make an appointment today as Sheriff Smith is still the actual sheriff today. However, whatever steps the board wants to take to determine who the board wishes to appoint and when the board wishes to make that appointment, it, it, you can't, I guess, the best thing to say, there's no prohibit, prohibition on deliberating or determining a procedure at this point.
But until we have a vacancy, we do not need to be appointing an interim sheriff.
You cannot actually make the appointment, no.
So we need to take this off the table until after the.
March the seventh is our first meeting.
Well, I would not recommend taking it completely off the table. I would take off making an appointment. Um, I do think there's been some confusion as to how the board would like to receive candidates and what the board may wish to do there.
We can't do it till after March seven, uh, February twenty-eighth.
Right.
Right.
So.
Now, who's in charge after February twenty-eighth?
After February twenty-eighth, the chief deputy will be acting sheriff until such time as the board makes the appointment.
One.
Okay.
And that was clear of what, uh, Mr. Carter said also.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I move to postpone this till February, I mean, March the seventh, appointing the sheriff is.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second to, uh, postpone this action until March the seventh. Uh, recognizing that from the first through the seventh, the chief deputy will be the acting interim sheriff. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And then we will officially make a decision on March the seventh.
And you suggested procedures?
Well, I just, I know there's been some confusion as to whether or not, um, the board wanted a formal letter, wanted the disclosure statements. Um, I know there were some questions as to who wished to be considered. If the board wishes to establish any procedure for that, that is in the discretion of this board. If the board just. The board does not have to establish a procedure.
Can we afford that to you as the county attorney to make sure all the state laws are abided by?
I mean, you can. I, I mean, the, I think that the board is right now abiding by the state laws. The laws are silent as to some discretionary procedural issues.
Let's go ahead and take a vote on the, uh, postpone it until March the seventh and we'll get that behind us, okay? Uh, is there any further discussion about that, about that specific part of the, of the issue? Here or none. Those in favor of that motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Another question, Ms. Stanley?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this considered personnel in a closed session is needed? Or do we discuss it in open session?
I would say that the actual discussion, um, of qualifications and determination would be personnel for closed session and then the appointment would be in open session.
So we need to put one of those on our next meeting agendas to discuss that.
Okay, very fine. And.
Thank you.
And frankly, uh, you know, I understand, I agree, uh, with postponing until March the seventh. Um, frankly, I thought that we would proactively make a decision to move forward perhaps, and that was an error on my behalf. But it's, it's quite fine. We do indeed want to follow the general statute. I mean, they're, they're there for a reason, so. Sounds good. County manager?
Thank you. Last item of business, no action needed, is, uh, just a general update on the ARP funds. The last meeting, I believe, Commissioner Lizard asked for, so, an update because of, because of the final rule being distributed. So a final rule was finally given out by the feds, yeah, in January twenty-twenty-two, and it takes effect April twenty-twenty-two, although it said also that it could take effect immediately. But I'm just telling you what the actual final rule said. Um, some key changes and clarifications in the rule are, it's, uh, it delivers a broader flexibility and greater simplicity in the program, and it's responsive to the feedback in the process. There are different aspects. One is replacing lost public sector revenue. The final rule offers a standard allowance for revenue loss of up to ten million. If you recall, the county received four point two roughly. This allows recipients to select between the standard amount of revenue loss or complete their revenue loss capitalization. Okay? Recipients that select the standard allowance may use that amount, in many cases their full award, that would be our case, for government services, okay? And it has a, a streamlined reporting requirement, okay? Um, update for the public health and economic impact. In addition to programs and services, the final rule clarifies that recipients can use funds for capital expenditures that support an eligible COVID-nineteen public health or economic response. Uh, an example they give is recipients may build certain affordable housing, childcare facilities, schools, hospitals, and other projects consistent with the final rule requirements. And just so you know, I think the final rule did come out to four hundred and ninety-three pages? Something like that. You know, a little afternoon reading. Um, premium pay, uh, the final rule delivers more streamlined options to provide premium pay. If you recall, you've already provided that, okay? By broadening the share of eligible workers who can receive premium pay without a written justification while maintaining a focus on lower income and frontline workers performing essential work. Water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, the final rule significantly broadens eligible broadband infrastructure investments. But if you recall, at our retreat, we talked, remember, I, I believe Beverly showed us that there's those two circles and those circles have to interl-, uh, interlock or intertwine. One is the federal law, one's the state law. We need to make sure that we're doing both legally. But on the federal side, um, the final rule significantly broadens eligible broadband infrastructure investments to address challenges with broadband access, affordability, and reliability, and adds additional eligible water and sewer infrastructure investments, including a broader range of lead, remediation, and stormwater management projects, okay? And final rule effective date, the final rule takes effect on April first, twenty-twenty-two. Until that time, the interim final rule remains in effect. Funds used consistently with the interim final rule while it is in effect are in compliance with the SL, um, SLF RF program, ARP funds. Now, um, I did want to review with you quickly what we have already committed funds for in our, in our ARP funds. If you recall, we did a premium pay. We discussed that. That totaled about two hundred and fifteen thousand, okay? You have, uh, committed funds to repair a water line at Pope Farm Road. That was about thirty thousand, okay? Um, sheriff's cameras, body cameras, that was about thirty thousand. And one twenty-three transmission main repair, which is about two hundred and ninety thousand. In total, you've committed funds for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in expense. Now, there are other projects that, uh, we are in the process of or, uh, working towards. And one is, uh, we are receiving RFQ. We have received them on building a matrix for HVAC renovation for the county. Um, this was countywide, so, um, I would assume it's, it's as, uh, it can be as few buildings or scenarios, but we do have some areas where HVAC is a problem. I know the complex and health services building, um, it is something that we are constantly dealing with. But, uh, I would say a good budget number for that would be seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, if you recall, radios are required for our emergency management and our sheriff for our, uh, response. And those radios, if I'm not mistaken, I think, I think the number is seven hundred thousand. That's the number I, off the cuff budget number for that would be. If you recall, we are working towards a water building, and this is in our operations budget, but if we can supplant, which we were highly encouraged to do in our ARP office hours with Ms. Carol Malonzi, supplant, supplant, supplant is what we were told. Um, this water building is an eligible expense, and once we finish some of the advertising for it, we'll be able to present you with a dollar amount. Um, in the operations budget, we budgeted four hundred thousand. Um, everybody knows building materials and prices are not what they were. So I just off the cuff wrote down five hundred thousand. Um, and then also the last piece of the, uh, complex, the administrative complex building, uh, before complete renovation would be a roof. Um, I believe we've been told a roof on that building would be needed in the next three years. And I think, uh, at today's price is a quarter million is what was given to me. Now, you know, these funds have not been committed by you. You have not, you know, made those motions seconds and taken those votes. But the accumulation or of those funds that I've just given you proximate budgets for is two point two five. Add that to the five sixty you have committed and you're at about two point eight. So there's still a great chunk of change that is, you know, out there. Um, these funds that I've just mentioned for these potential projects, if you don't approve them or they're not what you want to do, um, there's even more monies available. But I did want to go over that with you, let you know that the final rule is out, let you know where we are, some ideas on the horizon for a potential commitment, um, and take any questions, recommendations that you may have.
Any update on the broadband stuff?
So.
In the update, the broadband, can we, is it edge board now?
Um, no. The federal rules broadened some of the broadband infrastructure use for our monies. Our state law is the hiccup there. Um, state law initially was you could only use unrestricted funds, unrestricted general funds. Unrestricted general funds are sales and use monies, sales and use tax monies. Um, the legislature recently broadened that to include ARP funds as, even though they are a restricted fund. But the problem with using the ARP monies is the cat, uh, there was a little bit of a, a statement put in the law by the, the state that said, uh, anybody who had received grant monies from the federal or the state, um, other, other grants was not eligible. Um, did I get that right, Gay?
Yes.
Yes, and the, um, Association of County Attorneys, we had our winter conference Thursday and Friday. And of course broadband and ARP funds were brought up at, at several points. The concern from the perspective, um, of the school of government and the Association of County Attorneys is one, uh, a lot also of liability if we could find an internet company who had not received a great grant and therefore the county could make a grant with ARP funds. The county would be doing just that, making a grant. And because the federal guidelines are in place here, um, the uniform guides, we're, we're having a great deal of trouble, at least from the attorney's perspective, of all the policies we're going to need in place to comply with the United States Treasury now administrating that money and subjecting it to audit. Um, hence like the conflict of interests, um, policy. There will probably be many more policies coming down the pipe. Um, the school of government is working on them right now and asking not, the county attorneys not to work on them individually, but we're going to work on them collaboratively. Um, but there is an issue there of who would monitor the broadband carrier to make sure that they were within the uniform guides, um, because it will fall back on the county if they are not. Um, there is also another question that was presented, which was what broadband company would actually subject themselves to this? Because it's going to be extremely invasive, um, into their financials and regulating, um, how they do their business. So there are those obstacles that also will need. So, there are those obstacles that also will need to be considered.
So, to answer your question, I'm not aware of an internet or broadband company in our area that is not a recipient of another grant, great or a federal-type grant, that would qualify for designation or commitment of ARP funds. I agree that it's probably our biggest issue, the county's biggest issue at this time. Yeah.
How is the North County Department where the global transport is going from Cutter Creek out to the global transport? I understand many units involved in that, how is that working out?
I'm unaware. I don't know.
Is that something you would mind checking into?
Sure, I can ask around. I can, I can see what I can find and let you know, but at this time, I don't know. I have no idea.
And I think I mentioned to you as well, Rockingham County.
Yeah, I spoke with-
And I mentioned to Mr. Thomas
Yeah.
to see if we could come up with a coalition. You're talking about deregulating some of the ARP funds and freeing up some budgeted items already? That that money is available for internet access, for broadband? And Mr. Harold, I think, and you as well, they collaborated in Rockingham County with the Rockingham County Government, Reevesville Area Foundation, Rockingham County Schools, and Rockingham Community College to come up with fourteen million, or ten point four million dollars for this expansion of undeserved, underserved areas of our county, which a lot of this is mostly Green County.
Sure.
As we said, internet access is a need, it's not a want now. It is a need. COVID actually brought it to the forefront.
So, I just-
Economic development needs it as well to bring businesses in. So, I would like for Mr. Thomas, if he has the time, to see if we can come up with a collaboration between our schools, our community college, county itself with unrestricted funds or deregulated funds, whatever you come up. And infinity is the fast speed in our county. I think harvest beam is satellite and understand pine tree needles interrupt the service with that. It's kind of like wavelength that we had once upon a time. If we could extend our, is it five G, Mr. Thomas? Speed on our internet, I think a lot of smiling faces would occur out here, since most of our people in our audience today are from all over the county. So, I would like to come up with some kind of collaboration possibly in getting a funding analysis with that for the broadband, high-speed internet. If Rockingham County can do it, Green County can do it. We just have to come ingenious in coming up with some ways to put money in the pot, and the ones that are receiving it need to put money in the pot as well. So, that was what I had to say.
I sent a email to all the missions about Rockingham County. That came out of the Association of New York. I told Patrick Miller, Pat Adams about that. I think they're on board at the moment. They, you know, they applied for twenty-four million dollars. And they both said right now, they think it's a good idea to have a collaboration, but we need to make rate and make sure what the grant people say.
Do you know a deadline on that? A deadline on that grant? I mean, when they're supposed to announce it?
I have a copy of the grant, but it's been a while. I haven't talked about it. It's been four or five months.
Now, you were, said you had contacted Rockingham County, and I'd like to hear the rest of what you have to say about that.
Yeah, I called Lance over at Rockingham. Last week was the manager's conference. He was out of place. I have a call with him this afternoon.
Okay.
It would be my opinion, if, why reinvent the wheel?
I knew you were trying to follow up.
Yeah. If he has a plan that's working, then maybe we could follow the same plan.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to say I did receive a phone call this morning about a family in need, and I thought it was a little over my head about waiving trash costs. Are you familiar with that, Susan? Are you going to mention that?
I was.
I'll wait for you then, but that's all I have.
Okay. County attorney, do you have anything else to say this morning?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner reports recommendations.
Just to elaborate on what Mr. De Haven said. Ms. Diane Andrews, Executive Director of Interfaith, found out last week from the school system that there was a homeless family in our county. Their father had passed away. There was a mother and three children that they were trying to help find a place to live. They did secure a place. This past weekend, I think Commissioner Burris and about forty volunteers went out and cleaned the inside of the house out. It was inhabitable before now. I think they have three dump trucks or more of garbage. They would like the county commissioners to waive the tipping fees at the landfill. This is a nonprofit, and I think we have done this in previous situations. So, I'm going to make a motion that we waive the tipping fees for the debris from the house that Interfaith is repurposing as a family residence.
I'll second the motion. Have a motion, have a second, any further discussion? Your and them, those in favor of the motion signify as a simple saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Guys, have the motions carried unanimously.
One other thing, the auditor from Cherry Becker said we would have our audit in the letter by the end of the month. Do you have that?
Um, I don't believe I do. I'll follow up.
So, the final draft, we were supposed to be given a copy?
Yeah.
And some type of letter from the accounting firm?
Yeah. I'll be glad to follow up.
Okay. And I want to bring up last meeting. Mr. De Haven went through our departments
Yeah.
and talked about their establishments and named the department heads. We did go over the Health Department, but we did not mention Joy Brock as the Health Department Director. She has worked diligently during the COVID, the last two years at least, making sure appointments are scheduled for vaccines. We, she even introduced two night appointments that people could come after work to get their vaccines. That whole department has gone above and beyond during the COVID. I've heard nothing but excellent comments regarding the treatment that citizens receive at the Health Department. And I guess Mr. Heath will go through the numbers. It's not gone yet. We're still asking, just due to three W's. Wear your mask, stay six feet apart, and sanitize your hands. So, in order for the congregation to do it, the choir needs to do it as well. So, please follow those so that we can return to some type of normalcy. Green County's small, but we've been hit hard. And now I understand the prisons are being added to our numbers because officially they are residents of Green County as long as they're staying here. So, that again is going to make our numbers astronomical.
Or the prisons required to get in shot?
Ms. Brock?
They're all first-
Yeah, all-
They're all first about a second, and they're-
Okay. Thank you.
But a requirement, I don't, is not required, like it's not required for us.
Pardon? Go right ahead, and I'll finish it up. Go ahead, please.
First thing I want to say is I want to thank everybody who's called me this morning. This week has been a very stressful week. And I don't normally talk on the telephone, but I got several phone calls about the sheriff thing, so I really appreciate people who called me. There were several people who said some things that I haven't shared about, so I really want to say thank you for all the phone calls. I want to begin my comment by congratulating Green County Mercy Services on updating the level of care for the proud medical level. I would also like to ask to repeat the family friends and Mr. Jim Porter and I thoughtful prayers. He was Assistant Chief of Law Fire Department for over thirty-four years. While I'm on the air, Mr. Tucker, I saw where St. Joseph's and Jason Fire Department are taking on, getting a new fire engine. So, I hope that improves the prior, the homeownership rate. Also notice for all the fire departments planning to hold a tax release draw on April the fifteenth at seven P M. Tickets are twenty dollars to be purchased for any department member. Please consider supporting this department as fast as possible as the chief. Also want to take a moment and congratulate Central National Premier Drugs Department, who are being awarded two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars by added producer grant for five funds and working capital to spend production and marketing wholesale ice cream products. The economic activity in Green County has really picked up recently and should pick up even more over the next couple of years with the tax work taking place that was recently passed by the General Center. Speaking of growth, I've noticed the housing complex across the wellness center is picking up at a well. I read there are six houses currently under construction and four lots that have been cleared for development. That's ten new houses that should be completed within the next two or three months. Speaking of housing, I can't say enough about how proud I am to be from Green County Applewood. Nearly forty individuals get together this weekend, have a family meeting. Green County has always been known to take care of those people, but it warmed my heart when people start offering a house. And there are over forty community members willing to help out, clean and gutter. I also want to thank the people in the audience who showed up, the chief's actually showed up, Mrs. Chase, transportation, so I want to thank you all for that. Moving into county business, I spent a lot of time discussing trash situations at the convenience site. Saturday, when I visited the Georgia Turner site, I noticed the container was full. In fact, all three containers were full. Commissioner, do you have pictures of the containers on your phone and in your email? On the weekends when citizens are out, these containers fill up fast. When I talk with the tenants, I am told they have already called, and the containers will not be empty until the next day or the following Monday. It makes no sense to me to keep the tenants on site when the containers are filled and will not be empty until the following business day. There's nothing that the tenants can do, and the public is getting frustrated not having any work to discard their trash. I have mentioned the ongoing issues several times, yet every time I go to take the trash out, there is another issue to deal with. As you're aware, we have budgeted in June for a second container at Brown Town Site. With so many ongoing issues, something needs to be done to the rest of the sites also. The citizens of Sharon and Jason deserve it better. Again, you have pictures of the situation in your email. At this time, I would like to hear your opinions of my fellow commissioners on how to proceed about sovereignty issues and any issues that they may have at their own convenience site. I personally suggest that we consider budgeting for a new container in the next budget cycle, but I'm open to hearing other opinions as well. I understand it's a huge amount of money, but unless someone else has a better solution, this department is unable to intensify. What solution and suggestion do others have?
I have a question. The site that he's referring to, is that the site where the employee, the contractor was sick? And was not there?
No, she's there.
She's there, but she was sick?
Yeah, so-
Elaborate.
So, they're compactors. So, when they fill up, you go out there and you push the button, and it crushes the stuff, and it pushes it into the back. I've got pictures in my text messages. I'd be happy to share them with you if you'd like. David went out this morning, he pushed a button, and there's no issue with recycle or garbage. Now, he said the cardboard was filling, he said there was still some room left, but a call has been made to G F I or G A L, and they're going to, and- And they are going to get a truck out there to get that taken care of. A lot of times, they don't work on the weekends, they do it on the following Mondays. So, I think that answers all of your questions.
The question then again to me is if the site, if the containers are full-
Yeah.
and they have been in the past. It sounds like maybe we have a tendency, we need to go back procedure-wise, to know how to push a button to compact it.
Uh, I think David went out and spoke to the lady, and she did say that she was sick. And he said that he was trying to work with her to find another person so that that wouldn't happen again, because it is inconvenient for the citizens who are going, and, you know, at the time, the container looks full and really can be compacted, so-
If the, if the containers are full-
Yes.
there's no need for an attendant to be on site?
Um, if-
In the contract, is there anything about closing the site when the containers are full?
So, I think we need to address that individually. There are different materials that are accepted at these sites, you know? If one container is full, but two are not, the two are still very useful, so-
But I think putting trash on the ground is another issue.
I, I think that that is an issue, yes. I would say that-
They're full, they're putting them on the top, they're putting it on the ground in front of it.
That's better than throwing it up beside the road.
Well-
For somebody else to pick up.
I would say, I would ask that, you know, Dave, David Jones be allowed to come up with some solutions for this. This is his department. I just want you to know that the issues that you're raising, they were, they were quick fixes.
First time I've talked about trash sites.
Yeah, we've talked about it a lot.
I'm ready to put this behind.
Yep.
So, David, if you come up with solutions, can he have those, two more meetings?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah.
Again, address some of the issues that have been brought up either by Commissioner Burris or any members.
I have one more question. So, on this site, I've noticed that the scale of the layout view is going out. Do we have a backup solution when the scales go out?
I believe the scales were recently overhauled. It was either at the beginning of this fiscal year or the prior fiscal year. David will tell you if you ask him that new scales are needed in the future, and that might be a great expense or a great commitment of funds from the ARP funds, because they are expensive. If it's eligible, if you recall, the final rule allows for general government expenses, or that is an enterprise fund, it is not general government, so we will check on its legality. But that would be a wonderful expense, or if we could supplant-
Then they'd make COVID-related.
No. If you choose, there's one option that is public or health or COVID-related, but anyways, we could try to work something out if, if that's something that you would like to do, a direction you would like to go.
Do you think the scales go out?
We close.
Does that site, is it like a convenience store or the whole thing shut down?
Um, I believe the weighing is gone, is done while they're down, but if there is other containers that they can throw materials and such in, that will remain open. But, but that service is closed. I know David has spoke to me before about when they have gone down and we just closed the site. It is what that site is used for predominantly.
Would like to mention the COVID numbers, indeed they are increasing. Five thousand five hundred and fifty-six of our citizens have come down with COVID that the Health Department's aware of. Two hundred and forty-four at this time are still active. We have five in the hospital, forty-seven in the congregant setting, and sixty-eight people in Green County have died from COVID. It is very real, it's very much out there. Let's talk about that in just a minute, and I'm going to touch on some, some of the very similar things that Commissioner Blizzard said. During our last county commissioner meeting, the county manager did present results of action items that were taken by the board in two thousand twenty-one. Commissioner Burrows went through and identified all the action items during the year and put them in an email, or put them in his, on his website. And the county manager wanted to give credit to the various departments that have worked with us during the implementation process of these actions, and, and did so. And actually, at the last meeting, his chairman, I made reference to the fact that we appreciate all of our employees. And I didn't single any specific department out, and I usually don't do that, because we do appreciate all of our employees and the contributions they make in the execution of their jobs. And there are some very wide-ranging responsibilities within the county. And it takes the entire staff, all of our employees, to make the machine that we refer to as local government work and benefit the citizens of our county. COVID-nineteen indeed has changed all of our lives. It's changed our lives personally, it's changed our lives as far as our, our, our- It's changed our lives personally, it's changed our lives as far as our, our, our departments in Green County. It brought challenges to the way the county did business and continues to do business. The local services were by and large delivered most of the time during the pandemic, uh, in a different manner. Uh, some of these services could not be done remotely, however, while others, by virtue of this, uh, some, some of the services could be done remotely. But however, by virtue of the services themselves, had, some of them had to be performed at what I would refer to as real-time or frontline or however you want to call it. And we have several departments who committed to, uh, who continue to serve during the pandemic daily in personal contact with others. Uh, I guess we could refer to those as our frontline employees. I hesitate again to mention, to mention departments by name, because it simply isn't black and white. And there is always a risk of overlooking somebody, and I would not like to overlook anyone, I would never do that on purpose. But I'm going to. If you ta- if you look at the year-end review, and you think about our employees, the services they provided, our departments have interfaced most in frontline services, one-on-one during the pandemic area were in alphabetical order. Our EMS folks, our jail folks, our health department, our public works department, our recreation department, our sheriff's department, social services and transportation, I named near about everybody, doesn't I? Senior citizens as well, I named nearly everybody. Recognize that nearly all our departments at one time or another were more frontline than remote. I value all of our employees. I feel all of our employees are essential to their jobs, and they deserve a statement of appreciation from this board. I will reiterate what I said at the last meeting and other times during the year, and have said previously today. We recognize and we appreciate all of our employees that our ser- and the services that our employees provide to the citizens of Green County. We thank you so much for what you do. And I think many of our citizens do recognize that. That having been said, are there any other comments from the board of commissioners before we close?
Make the motion in a joint?
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn and a further discussion. Here and then, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.